Which one are you using? This one?
Thank you.
Council, you ready? Council, y'all ready?
Yes.
Okay. Sheila, you ready? Good afternoon, everyone. Glad you are all here with us today. Welcome to the regular town council meeting for the Town of Southern Shores this beautiful Wednesday, November the 5th, 2025. If you'll all please stand and we'll have a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll observe a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Council, in front of you, you find an agenda. Are there any amendments to this, or may I hear a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. We have an approved agenda. Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda, which consists of two budget amendments, Budget Amendment 15 and 16, minutes approval from the October 7th meeting last month, and a contract for fire protection services for the Martin's Point Tax District. Are there any questions or discussion about the consent agenda?
I have a question.
Yes.
The message board, where is that going?
Cliff, can you help us out with what we're doing with the message board? What's the plan?
It's movable, portable, so it'll be used as needed, where needed, for different events, or, you know, boozie to lose it, and whatever the case is. We found a couple of times where we've had to borrow Dare Counties or NC DOTs, and this opportunity came, so we thought it'd be nice to have a second one.
Very good. All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Consent agenda is approved. We'll start our meeting off today with something we always enjoy doing, which is recognition of one of our fabulous staff members, in this case, member of our police staff. Chief Cole, please do the honors.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Today, it's my privilege to reintroduce who you already know is Officer Tracy Mann. She just recently obtained her Master Police Officer III status. As most of you already know, Tracy is from Dare County. She graduated from Manio High School, UMUC, and Appalachia State University. Tracy has over 20 years of experience as a police officer, the last 15 with the Town of Southern Shores. When I had her do this bio, and it was like, wow, that's when it really hit me, and I realized I'm pretty old. She started as the School Resource Officer in 2015, which was 10 years ago with Kitty Hawk Elementary School, and does an extremely professional and just an awesome job. And the reason I can stand here and tell you is that is because I've had a lot of parents and staff that have told me over the last 10 years that exact same thing. Again, 15 years with the Town of Southern Shores Police Department. Tracy has been the School Resource Officer since 2015. She has earned her Advanced Law Enforcement Certification. She is also School Resource Officer Certification. She's a general topics instructor. She's also a tactical medic instructor and a Dare Drug Abuse Resistance Education instructor, as well as a CPR and an AED instructor on top of that. Tracy is highly respected, deeply appreciated by both school staff, parents, and the students, and by her chief, who's very proud of her. She makes us look good. And I'd like to congratulate her on her 15 years with the Town of Southern Shores.
Yay, Tracy.
You want to come up?
Sure.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief Cole. Next, we'll go into our staff reports. So we'll hear from our deputy town manager and planning director, Mr. Wes Haskett. Good afternoon, Wes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. With respect to permits during the month of October, we issued 52. They consisted of 13 zoning permits, 22 building permits, 16 trade permits, and one light disturbance stormwater management permit. The total amount of fees collected for those permits in the month of October was $17,077.25. With respect to code enforcement, in the month of October, we mailed one warning citation for an animals ordinance violation, that's Chapter 4, animals, and two warning citations were mailed for solid waste ordinance violations. And with respect to the town planning board, they will not be meeting this month, but they will be meeting, most likely meeting on December 15th at 5:00. And at that meeting, they will most likely consider a ZTA submitted by the town to amend the town's current requirements for wastewater systems in Town Code Chapter 32 Utilities and Chapter 36 Zoning. Also wanted to touch on, at the last meeting, I reported on the Paul Gamble's Hill Life Saving Station designation and, you know, the forming of a committee to discuss that designation. We were going to come to you all this month and asking for a formal appointment of the committee members, but we're waiting. The Southern Shore Civic Association, they are having a board meeting later this month, and they're going to pick, I guess, a couple representatives from their group, and then we'll probably come to you all in December, asking for a formal appointment for that. But everyone is still interested in moving the discussions forward, but we're just waiting to get their two representatives. Then we'll bring it all to you all for a formal appointment. Any questions?
That's great news about that. I think it's going to be really good to have that.
Yes, ma'am.
Committee.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Cole?
Thank you again, Mayor, members of council. I have two months of reports for you. First one will be September 2025. We had 1,457 calls for service for the month of September. And I didn't get a real quick chance, this is all hot off the press from Jennifer, but I think last year, we had about just a little over 1,100 calls for service, so up about 300. As you can see, under the incidents, which were the actual crimes that were reported, we had 13 of those. We had nine criminal arrests. Let's see, officers conducted 102 traffic stops. And out of that, they wrote 34 written citations and another 77 warning citations. And we still had the community resource officers, so we had 33 ordinance violations. And we had two reportable motor vehicle accidents for the month of September. Any questions on September? Jumping into October, we had 1,580 calls for service, and we had 1,236 the year before for October. Under the incidents, we had 16 incidents reported. We had another six criminal arrests. We had 56 traffic stops, 16 written citations, and another 30 warning citations, had three ordinance violations, they were all parking in a right-of-way. Then we had five motor vehicle accidents that were actually reportable for the month of October. Kind of wing through those quick, but if you have any questions.
So Chief, what do you attribute the uptick in the number of incidents?
Some of it is, some of it is actually property checks and business checks. And then some of it is the actual, we're starting to doing a little bit more work with the drug, with some of the drug arrests. I can't get into specifics, but some of the numbers in that are up because of some of the follow-ups that some of our officers have been working with other agencies on. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Cole. Chief Limbacher? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. I apologize, mine's in a little different order, but all the numbers are up there. But for the month of October, Fire Department responded to 68 calls, and it breaks down as one, the vehicle fire, which was up on Wax Myrtle, one vehicle accident with out injuries, two with one of our beach wheelchair programs, one of our smoke detector programs, one public assistance, two arcing or shorted lines, one assist the police or government agency, one public service, two standbys, two cancel the route, five fire alarms, and 45 EMS calls for the month of October. That puts us a little bit ahead, which was 52 and 24, so a little bit ahead. Any questions on that report? The only other couple things, the open house, everyone knows tomorrow, or Friday, same time as the Kitty Hawk Elementary School Fall Carnival. Training continues with the captains, so we're just getting them up to speed, doing some engineer training with them, pumping, driving the trucks now, so hopefully we'll have them up to speed in the next couple of months, and they'll be ready for summer, so. Anything else? Also, in January, I think, still going to be January, Cliff, have the captains in the SS VFD Board, VFD Board here. Hopefully, everyone can make it in January, and that's why we pushed it back a month, so.
Look forward to it.
All right. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Appreciate you. Cliff, town manager. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. First, wanted to talk to you about the Resilient Coastal Communities Program. As you all know, we were selected in this year's round of funding for this program. The program's been around since, I think, 2018, and to date, there's been 108 grants awarded, distributed nearly $16 million worth of funding. The, so what I have written there is the North Carolina Resilient Coastal Communities Program, or RCCP, is administered by the Division of Coastal Management, and the purpose is to support a locally-driven process for setting coastal resilience goals, assessing community capacity, and identifying and prioritizing projects that strengthen resilience to coastal hazards. I rewrote that so I could understand it, and it says, "A group of our," and this is what I interpret this to mean, "a group of our citizens will find out from other citizens where the holes are that we need to plug to strengthen our ability to withstand impacts from bad weather." So, yeah, it was 2018, it was established by executive order. It's funded through the General Assembly and a National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant, and all 20 coastal Kama counties and the municipalities are eligible. So there's four phases of the program. The first two phases are the ones that we've been awarded. Phase one is community engagement and vulnerability assessment. That's when everyone, there'll be a CAT team that's formed, that I'll explain and get some direction from y'all in a minute. But this is when the group goes out and they discuss with other community members any issues that they see that the town needs to address to help us be more resilient. And then it'll, the next phase will be planning project identification and prioritization. So the goal walking away from this is to have a list of projects that we might be able to take on, that we can go get funding for in Phase 3 and 4. And it could be stormwater, it could be any number of things, shoreline stabilization, there's all sorts of things that we could potentially gather from this. The, so this is the group of folks that were awarded in this cycle. I won't read them all, but I did highlight the three from Dare County, Dare County, Manio, and Southern Shores. And overall, the past awardees, going back to 2018, again, highlighted Hatteras, Naggshead, Kitty Hawk, and Duck have all, Duck was, there were five towns that started this with a pilot program, and Duck was one of those. So the way this works is the, there's two sets of applications. The municipalities or the counties make an application, and then there's consultants that make an application, so they can get paired up to help the town go through the process. And we're paired with Coastal Protection Engineering, who is our beach nourishment engineer. So they're the ones we'll be working with, they'll be the ones kind of taking the lead and taking the charge going forward. And this is what we'll get when we come away from this. The main deliverable is a resilient strategy based on the guidance that we get from DCM and the guidance we get from CPE. And there's three components to that, that deliverable. There's a vulnerability assessment report. There's a project portfolio of potential projects that we may need to do. And then everything's packaged up real nice in a GIS that we can implement into our system. There's Phase 1, again, we're proof of Phase 1 and 2. There's six steps in the first phase, and there's two steps in the second phase. Step 1 is developing a community action team. Step 2, review existing local plans and efforts, set vision and goals. Step 4 is to develop a community engagement strategy. Step 5 is to map critical assets and natural infrastructure. And step 6, conduct a risk and vulnerability assessment. And then in Phase 2, it's when we identify, prioritize, and put it all together. So that step 1 is where I need some direction from you all. The, is developing the community action team. First step in the process is for each community to create a CAT. The CAT for each community will be made up of stakeholders to provide targeted input and champion the effort. They, what's recommended is five members, five representative members of the town. And this is CPE's role and how they'll lead the community action team. They will identify the additional community members. If the five that we start with, we see there's an area that we, those five may say, hey, there's a hole we need to plug here, and this is the person that might be able to do that. They'll facilitate the meetings, and they'll package it all up as we move forward. So I'll stop there and ask you all if I can get some direction on who, and it's not necessarily maybe who we should appoint, but the representative, someone, one of you all, representative of town council, representative of planning board, the representative of the SSCA, CPOA, a citizen at large. So those, that's what I'm looking for, is to find out if some format like that is agreeable with you all, and we'll go out and get these five members and start to get to work on this.
And I guess one of the first questions is going to be the length of time of the commitment and the periodic commitment. So just generally speaking, what are you, what's your best guess?
It's one year to complete this.
Okay.
And it's probably 10 to 20 hours a month for each volunteer. And a lot of this is them going out and, like, if a member of the SSCA or CPOA, they can gather, you know, they have a captive audience that they can go and ask questions and get, you know, comments back from to help build all this. And so that can occur at any time.
Is there travel involved with holding meetings?
Everything was virtual, so we won't gather, and we may, there'll probably be some open house, you know, larger meetings like that, but the CAT will get together over Zoom.
Okay.
I would just say, you know, this community is so full of extremely talented, knowledgeable people. I mean, I think it's great for somebody in the council to be on there, but I would like to cast the net out a little bit and invite people with the expertise that feeds into this, because, you know, I think they could be very helpful. You know, some of our people with engineering backgrounds and marine science backgrounds.
Okay. We can put out an ask.
Five total, right?
Yes. At a minimum.
Council, planning board, SSCA, and two outside.
Two, yeah, that's good.
If everyone agrees on that as the makeup, then I'll, and it's okay, then, you know, I'll do the ask and fill those holes.
And I'm Mark.
I was going to say, Councilman Botanic, you're representative.
Well, maybe we could discuss that.
Yeah, absolutely.
See who's got the time and the expertise.
Okay. Do you have any questions about this program?
I think the general framework of one planning board, one council, one SSCA, two.
Two at large.
At-large community. And clearly trying to do what Paul says, which is we need people with the ability to have conversations with the community members, be able to listen, and also maybe some backgrounds that are slightly related to weather.
Right.
You know, vulnerability. So you got to have some kind of feel for either engineering, earth science, something in there. Okay. That seems fine with me. You don't need to vote or anything, we just sort of consent.
I know, I may jump in the gun a little bit here, but have there been models of these teams, these CAT teams, and/or what the different products are for Phase 1 and 2?
The, everyone that was previously awarded, they all have the deliverable that we'll get. And we can, you know, that'll probably be one of the first thing we do is gather, gather those from those municipalities.
Yeah, there's no sense re-venting the wheel or whatever. We can look at those and say, hey, they've got 90% of it, but we want to put our imperator on it, and maybe something unique in Southern Shores.
Right. And the big benefit to this is in Phase 3 and 4. And some of those that have completed these first two phases have gotten some significant amounts of money to complete some of the projects that they identify. And the other part of this is, there may be things that we hadn't even talked about or things we haven't considered that people see as a problem in town. And so it's a good program, I think.
What sort of, I'm just curious, so they've been awarded grants based on these?
Yes.
These stuff, and so what have been the granting authorities, just generally?
A lot of it's stormwater, stormwater projects.
From the state?
Yes, from the state.
State, okay.
It's state-funded.
Okay.
And like I said, that, and I think the shoreline stabilization, living shoreline projects, I think those are two of the, probably the biggest.
Right.
Examples.
Okay. Very good.
All right.
So we'll talk about it and do our recruiting process and hopefully get the names by the December meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that the, that, this one? Okay, cool. Awesome.
And then briefly, I just want to let you know the timeframe for the East Dogwood Street Project. The, it's still in the data gathering phase, but the project is, the engineer told me yesterday, project is bid for, to go out for bids in December, hopefully being under contract in January, and the project be done May 15th. Right now is the window for that rebuild of East Dogwood. See the sidewalk replacements continuing from Fifth Avenue to Hillcrest? I think that work will finish up here soon, but they have until the end of this year to finish that. Yesterday, I ordered 10 cases of beach grass, so I don't know if we'll hear from Lynn or not, but, so that, it's that time of year again. And we've talked about, after these last two storms, we're still looking at whether or not we may need to supplement with sand fence. Lynn and I talked yesterday, and there is a section of Pelicans Watch, maybe, that could use some sand fence. And Kitty Hawk, if you remember, after the last project, we had several feet of sand fence that was left, and then the next year, we planted, I mean planted, we installed all of that sand fence. But Kitty Hawk still has theirs, and so there might be an opportunity for us to partner with them, you know, to buy some of their fence, if they're going to install that this year, to at least extend up on the north end, so we may be able to address that that way. But planting the grass for sure, sand fence will follow. Possibly.
And you and Lynn have already spoken with Ken Wilson about the whole idea of, you know, he'd made several references to, you know, places where the dunes are extremely wide, and then places where they're not as wide. So you guys have already prioritized where the efforts are going to be.
Yeah, he'll be a part of that.
And he'll be a part of that.
Yes, ma'am.
And that takes place soon? That's before?
It's being delivered next week.
Oh, okay.
So I'd assume shortly thereafter, next week. Not this weekend, but the next, I would imagine. I think the Boy Scouts are interested in helping.
Well, I'm just, I know that the idea of sand fences is a little controversial among some oceanfront owners, because some of our dunes are getting really high, which is a good thing, except there's a point where you don't want them a lot higher. You might want them deeper, longer, so I don't know if there's a way to consult individual property owners about, or take sort of a specific individual attempt, you know, attempt to get information rather than just blanket decide.
Right.
We're going to do this. But, you know, for instance, the dunes on my stretch of the beach are very sturdy dunes, but I don't need them to be 20 feet high.
Right. Yeah. Right, yeah, we'll we'll make sure.
I might change my mind if the hurricane's coming, but you know, for right now, just to be able to.
The sand fencing typically broadens the width of the barn, not the height.
Yeah, that's what we want.
It shouldn't make an impact. But if you start pocket holing different properties, it degrades the whole integrity of the dune structure. So like, if somebody wanted to opt out, then that's a weak spot.
Right, right, we don't want to do that. But I just think we need to broaden, not heighten so much.
Not on top of the vegetation, but.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I should have any more questions for Cliff? Sorry, I forgot that part. Any more questions, questions for Cliff? Okay, thank you. Now we'll hear from our town attorney, Mr. Philip Hornthal. Good afternoon, sir.
No point.
Okay.
I was a good head of the mayor.
Yeah, I like hearing that. All right, general public comments, we have a few people that have signed up. Ms. Donna Creep. This is Donna Creep.
Good afternoon. Congratulations, Mayor and Commissioner Sherlock, on your reelection.
Thank you.
I'm glad I'm sure you're glad to have that behind you. I know it was a long day for you yesterday. I am Donna Creep. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Outer Banks Association of Realtors, and I'm here today just to because I was coming to up here to do my job, and I figured I'd take advantage of the public comment and let the public know that the North Carolina Rate Bureau has filed a increased request for an increase in dwelling rate policy coverages amounts. The last amounts that went in effect were in 2024, and so they have filed a request to have increases in 2026 and 2027. And the difference between a dwelling policy and a homeowner's policy is that a dwelling policy covers vacation homes, second homes, rentals, and we have a lot of lot of those here in town. And so your property owners are liable to be impacted by this. And so they're asking, they have territories where the rates apply, and we are in Territory One Ten here on the Outer Banks of Dare County, and that rate increase that they're asking for is forty percent, a rate increase of forty percent for both the first year and for the second year. So that base rate now is for fifteen thousand dollars worth of coverage is, let me see what my notes are here, it the increase would be almost a hundred dollars than that first year, and then in the second year, it would be a hundred and forty dollars. So you're looking at a fairly substantial increase. Typically, how this happens, they ask for the rate increase, Commissioner Causey asks for public comment, there's lots of public comment, and then they negotiate something lower than that. So that's where we are now. The public comment period is open until the nineteenth of November. Comments can be written, submitted, written comments or emailed. And in the past, we have asked the towns to share that information on their web pages. And so we will be sending something out here shortly. They just released the press release on Monday, and so I just got wind of this yesterday. And so it was very timely to come up here today, so I'll be if if you'd be so kind when when we send that out, if you could post that on your your webpage so your property owners know where to get that information submitted to to the Department of Insurance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Donna, for that terrifically good news. We appreciate it. You're just the messenger, yes. I get it very much. But yeah, we will take advantage of you coming to us and letting us know, and we'll get the information posted on our town website and put it in the next newsletter, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll do all the normal stuff that we do. Mr. Leo Holland.
Good afternoon, Council. My name's Leo Holland. I live at Twenty Three Spender Trail. Want to congratulate Elizabeth and Paula for your election yesterday. I did enjoy some of your chocolates later in the afternoon. My purpose here today is to remind you that next Tuesday is Veterans Day. We will have the Knights of Columbus and the town are collaborating to have a ceremony, which will be held in here, not outside like we used to do. So it'll be November eleventh at eleven o'clock. So if you can come, Elizabeth, I know you're a part of the program. Our main speaker is a Colonel that spent had four tours in Afghanistan, so he should provide us with a lot of good information. It could be a little difference. We're going to have set up over here those that have been in the military under know what it is. It's the Missing Man or Missing Person Table. The American Legion has loaned us their contents or the items that we will have on the table, and believe it or not, each one, including the table, have a specific meaning, which I will read off at the end of the ceremony. So and then the other thing you'll notice, in the past, you've probably seen me in a cape, a chapeau, a tuxedo. Well, I'm going to have a different uniform on Veterans Day. I'll explain that just before the ceremony opens, so everybody understands what we got. So I encourage you to come and support our veterans program. And I want to thank Cliff and Simpson for their help of putting the help put this together. And that's my comments, and thank you.
Thank you, Leo. Mr. Lynn Beachgrass Schmitz.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Congratulations on I'm Lynn Schmitz, Eight One Eighty Four Wax Mill Trail. My want to congratulate you on your elections, both Elizabeth and Paula. I'm just here, Cliff already mentioned all the stuff what I was kind of come going to come up here and talk about, that it's November and it's time to start beach grass planting. And I've been been in contact with the supplier, and they have plenty of grass to be available. And the town has lots of money, so I should have enough for like twenty to twenty-five days of planting. I've already had like the Boy Scouts and church groups and even Dominion Power want to what the groups want to come out. So I want to let anybody know, if anybody has a group, you want to come out and plant beach grass one day, then, you know, contact me and we can arrange a day either during the week or a weekend or whatever. That's about it. As far as the sand fence goes, I understand we're not really trying to build the dunes taller, we're trying to build the dunes wider. I think the goal, at least talking with Donnie King down in Kitty Hawk, they want to have like a hundred feet of dune. So and some places up in Seacrest Village, we already have that. Some places down in the south, we don't have that. So we want to, when we put more sand fence in, it's going to be eastward, not on top of another set of sand fence. What else? I guess that's it. Any questions?
Thanks, Lynn. Any questions? There's really not time for questions, it's public comment, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thanks anyway.
That's my comment.
Any anyone else forgot to sign up but would like to do public comment? Okay. Moving to our no old business, so move next to new business. Council, this is number six in your books, which is on page eleven. And I believe Cliff is going to help us out with this.
Thank you. So this is installing irrigation at the cemetery. We have, as you know, the cemetery fund, and the reason we're before you is that we need a if you approve this, we need a budget amendment that'll allow us to transfer the revenue to the expense so we can do this project. We went out to bid, we we received two bids, low bidder was Daniel's Eric, Daniel's irrigation, sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. We've kind of put the timeframe together for this project to start. We want to get as much green as we can, what's out there right now. So we've made the window for this from January till March, so we can try and get it ready for the growing season in the spring and summer. This project, it it's head-to-head coverage, it'll be trinched in where possible, it'll have to be dug in in some places. It's the there's no well, this is going to be put on town water, I mean, excuse me, county water, but it will have the ability to go from county water to a well in the event where if the cost is prohibitive. But we will be able to control that. It's also there's no there's not a power source, so this will be a this actually a battery operated system. So in addition to that, we're asking for two thousand, an additional two thousand dollars to cover the cost of some other things that we've done out there, additional plantings, mulching, and we put a new fence along the north end property line. So what we're asking for is a motion to authorize the town manager to enter a contract with Daniel's irrigation and approve a budget amendment in the cemetery fund for nineteen thousand dollars.
Very good. Any questions for Cliff?
Have you have you gotten any well prices?
We, yes. I they were much higher. The the that and the power, we we took off to try and save the the power was going to be more than the well. Our our concern with the well is the iron and just afraid of what it would do.
Yeah. The water will add up to the cost of the well.
Yeah, it probably won't take long.
That's the only reason. I would think we should think about it long term. I'm fine with this, though.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
See how see how the water use goes and then think about a well. Okay.
Yeah, and the there is already a tap and a meter out there, so.
Right.
We'll be able to.
This is ready to go.
Yeah.
I'll I'll repeat the motion. I'll a motion to authorize the town manager to enter a contract, low bidder, Daniel's irrigation, and also to approve budget amendment number seventeen.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion, Council?
My my only question is, you know, there are irrigation systems that are very unobtrusive, and you don't really notice them, and then there are some that are not so much. So there isn't, there is an eye here to keeping this low maintenance and aesthetically pleasing.
Absolutely.
Because the cemetery is looking pretty good.
Every time I talk to somebody about the cemetery, they always say how great it's looking now.
When we're done, we don't want you to know it's there, so.
So that's it, okay.
You don't want anything with hoses hanging all over it. Just just checking.
That and that's part of the reason for doing this, so we're not dragging hoses around.
Not dragging those, yeah. Well, the the tap that's there, the faucet that's above ground, is that going to be left or altered or?
It may be altered, but it'll be there.
Okay.
Spigot will be there.
Okay, yeah, spigot, sorry. Okay, any other comments? Questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. All right. Also, under new business, we have a public hearing, so I'm going to turn the meeting over to our attorney, Mr. Philip Hornthal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I now open public hearing to consider TCA dash two five dash zero one, a town code amendment request submitted by the town of Southern Shores to amend town code section one dash fourteen to remove the requirements for reconsideration of disapproved development and amendment request in town code section six dash five to clarify when building permits are required for retaining walls and to remove the requirement to obtain a building permit for fences. This time I call town staff.
Thank you, Mr. Hornthal. Good evening or afternoon again, rather, council members. I'll get used to that one day.
Yeah.
This next application, writing on your agenda, is TCA dash two five dash zero one, and this is an amendment request, town code amendment request from town staff. As you all will recall, at the September second, twenty twenty-five town council meeting, you all adopted ZTA dash two five dash zero five, and that included requirements for established requirements for reconsideration of disapproved development and amendment requests. You also probably recall that I said at the time that there was proposed legislation that would could potentially prohibit what we were putting in putting before you all, and that was in HB dot HB nine twenty-six. And then, sure enough, on October sixth, HB nine twenty-six became law. So one part of this amendment request is to do what we promised, is to take out what you all adopted on September second, twenty twenty-five, NZTA dash two five oh five. So that's the first part of this TCA. And in your packets, in the actual document, it's part one, and it's section one dash fourteen, reconsideration of action on development and amendment requests. We are proposing to delete it in its entirety. It was added in September as section one dash fourteen, and we are tonight or this afternoon, we are requesting that you all take it out in its entirety. So that's part one of this TCA request. Part two addresses building permits. And what we are proposing in this case is to clarify when building permits are required for retaining walls in section one dash fourteen and to remove the requirement to obtain a building permit for fences. And this is, in both cases, this is, with respect to retaining walls, this is more of a clarification. We have not, and historically that I'm aware of, required a building permit for a retaining wall. And when I say retaining wall, in this instance, I'm referring to retaining walls on land, not a bulkhead that is separating water from land. This is land on both sides retaining wall. We have not required retaining walls that were from one feet in height above the ground to four feet in height above the ground. We have required retaining walls that were five feet or six feet. The maximum height is six feet. So in this case, we're just trying to clarify in the ordinance by stating that a building permit is only required for retaining walls from five feet to a maximum of six feet in height. And this is based on the statute for requirements in the statutes for building permits that refers to load-bearing structures. The building inspector, our current building inspector, our previous building inspector have never considered retaining walls that were one feet to four feet load-bearing structures. So we feel five to six feet, that's when they do cross a threshold, so to speak, and that it right it does trigger the requirement for a building permit. The second part of part two in this TCA request is to just simply remove the requirement for a building permit for fences. The statutes do not allow for requiring a building permit for fences. They're not load-bearing, and they they're not, they don't rise to the level, there are specific standards in the statutes, there always have been. They're currently in one sixty D, and prior to one sixty D, they were in another part of the statutes where they it lists out the specific things and the reasons why a building permit is required, and fences are not one of them. So we are just simply requesting to take and fences out of section six dash five. We do have a requirement in the zoning ordinance for fences, which is a maximum, just like walls, walls and fences, their maximum height is six feet. Unless you're in a commercial district, it's a maximum of ten feet. So that's what we're requesting today. The planning board, we recommend approval of these amendments. The planning board considered this TCA request at their meeting on October twentieth, and they unanimously recommended approval five zero. That's all I have, Mr. Hornthal. I can try to answer questions now or later.
Thank you. We have no one signed up to speak, but is there anyone here that would like to speak? Any questions, Mr. Ask it from here, Don? We have a question.
Because I'm a plain and simple person, what does this mean to the property owner in Southern Shores? I mean, what difference is all this going to mean to the average property owner?
So now it it won't change anything with retaining walls, we're just putting in the code what we have been practicing.
Okay.
So nothing changes there. And and the same thing for fences, we have not been requiring building permits for fences. This is basically putting in the code the way what we have been practicing and following the statutes.
Any other questions? I now close the public hearing.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Phil. Council, any further discussion of TCA 2501? Or questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve ZTA 20? Wait a minute, let me get this right.
TCA 25.
TCA 2501. That's what we're talking about, right? TCA 2501?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm reading a typo, sorry.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those favorite, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you, staff, for all of that. All right. Next, on our agenda is council business. Anybody want to go first?
I got my calendar.
Mayor Proton, would you like to go first?
Yes, next week, excuse me, next week on the 12th at 9:00 AM, the Entry Corridor Committee will be meeting to do, I hope to be a final review of our draft report to present to you all the next month, depending on committee agreement. And then on the 13th, I'll be attending the first Dare Housing Foundation Committee, or not Committee, but Dare Housing Foundation meeting as a board member. Thank you all for the appointment.
Thank you for accepting. Paul?
Nothing to report.
Rob?
Both of the meetings I was supposed to attend were canceled, meeting one for Current TV, and then the second one was the anniversary, 250th anniversary of the Declaration. I did have a discussion with the head of Current TV that quite possibly, if we're going to get a historic designation over here in Hillcrest Beach for the, the old lifesaving station, that maybe we ought to kind of document the process, you know, with video to say, here's how you go through the whole process, and we can say this is how you do, we did it in Southern Shores. So it would be incremental over time, but that might be kind of a, a fun thing to do, and I think, you know, they're looking for some, you know, historic things, and I think that would be a good one. So they're considering it.
Sounds like too, that would, if we ever need to do it again.
Exactly.
We can see what the process we used was before, and if it didn't have any, any obvious flaws.
It'll be documented in zeros and ones.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Our next meeting is scheduled for December the 2nd at 1:00 PM here at the Pitt Center. Talking about the cemetery, I, I just want to make sure that staff, including our public work staff, knows that I think that the new fence is fabulous, the new mulch is fabulous. Can't wait for some more plantings to get some more color to go with our nice green grass. So thank you all for all of those efforts. And it'll be interesting to get the irrigation out there maybe and make this sort of a permanent I think it's time for motion to adjourn. So moved? Second? Consensus? Here we go. We're adjourned. Thank you all.